Pardons.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
I'm supposed to state the time, aren't I?
Yeah. It's 6:38. That's good.
Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Here.
Mr. Everly?
Yes, here.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Maxey?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mulholland?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Right. Do we have a motion and a second, or would anybody like to see any amendments to the agenda? Then do we have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mulholland and a second by Maxey. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have no audience to visitor cards, I don't believe, so we'll move on to the next item, which is the treasurer's report.
Oh, that is Melissa. She's running a little late. She told me to cover that for her, but it's as presented. No additions, and I believe she's still waiting for the signature from Mark.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Maxey and a second by Mulholland. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes. Motion passes. That brings us to item six, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few things. Today had the chance to attend a luncheon put on by the North Boone County Health Department as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and the topic was students and vaping, and about how much vaping has increased with our student population and how harmful that is. So that'll be an item or a concern that we'll continue to look at and address coming down the line for our kids and our schools. So the other thing we had was, I was going to report during superintendent's report, was pre-K has been a discussion item of ours for a while. We do not have it on the agenda tonight because, for two reasons. One is the state has decided to reoffer the preschool for all grant, which we will make sure that we put our names in for. And also, too, as of our final screening dates, we have all of our kids that have asked to be screened and are looking for pre-K enrollment spots. We've got room in our pre-K program as it is right now, with extra seats available for incoming students that would like to be part of our pre-K. So our pre-K is ready to go for next year. And testing, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness and the SAT really are done in pass. We're kind of at that point where we're at makeups, so that is the last week for all of that to get done and concluded, and it'd be nice to be done with that, but then it's on to MAPS, which I'm sure excites all of our teachers very much. And the last thing I have, strategic plan meeting is May 10th here at the district office. That's it.
Mike, you've sent out invitations. Is there...
Yes. Yep, and we've been getting responses back, and most of the responses back have been positive, and for those that have not responded back, we'll do follow-ups shortly.
Okay. That's Friday, May 10th?
Friday, May 10th.
Do we have a time?
It's in the morning.
Okay.
I believe it's eight. Eight to noon.
Eight to noon. I just want to make sure I have that down.
With the meeting starting at 8:30.
Any questions for Mike? All right, hearing none, we move on to committee reports. Policy committee.
We have not met, Mike. Is there some stuff that we need to...
We do. We have policies that are up. I'll work with you on an after-school date here, right after our meeting starting this week.
Business services committee.
Business services, we met last week. We talked about transportation, athletic fees, pre-K, technology purchases, some of the facilities pieces that you'll see tonight, and also MAPS textbooks and adoption plans. So recommendations will be made for action on some of those items tonight.
And no, no plans for, no plans for a future meeting yet? Long-range facilities.
We have a map. We have a meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay.
Time we might want to talk. Our bids came back on the roof for Manchester better than expected, so I'll reach out to you, because there may be some other items that we want to discuss or possibly get together.
And CIA.
We have a meeting planned.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to item number eight, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for March 19th, 2019?
Some of them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Maxey, a second by Mulholland. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business. The first item under unfinished business is the Poplar Grove sewer repair.
Yes, so we got design and plans back with a bid for $7,500, which was under 10. So we had Greg Stoller look at it, review it, which he thought was right. So we moved forward to keep the designs and the plans working forward. So we're anticipating those shortly from the civil engineer. There's nothing to vote on at this time, but kind of enough to go where we're at.
Okay. Thank you. And the Manchester roof replacement.
Bids for the Manchester School Roofing Project were opened on April 11th. We had a total of 12 bids. The bid proposals for the base bit scope of work ranged anywhere from $154,250 to $199,306. Cashman Stoller did review the bids to make sure that all the specs were correct, and it's our recommendation to accept the proposal from Sterling Roofing for $154,250. And if you're wondering, we had originally budgeted $240,000 for that project, so we came back in under.
Excellent. Do I have a motion from the board?
I make a motion that we approve the roof bid for Manchester from Sterling Roofing for the amount of $154,250.
Thank you, Mary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. A motion by Maxey, a second by Moon. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to the new business, which are the April 2019 bills. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the April 2019 bills?
Move the...
About a second?
Second.
Okay. Brian Renninger, motion by Mulholland.
Hazelhurst.
Brian Hazelhurst.
One of these years, Brian. One of these years. Oh, man, it'd be funny if it weren't real. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to the acceptance of the canvas of elections. Do I have a motion from the board to accept the canvas of election?
No motion.
Motion by Maxey, second.
Second.
By Mulholland. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Motion passes. At this point in time, we indefinitely adjourn, and so I'm going to need a motion and a second for indefinite adjournment. Please.
I make a motion for an indefinite adjournment.
Don't want to say it in Latin? All right, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. And now, by protocol, we will reconvene the meeting to administer the oath to the newly elected board members. Do I have a motion and a second to reconvene the meeting?
Sure.
Although I'm not really sure why, but Robert, Robert must have known what he was doing.
Robert and his rules.
Robert's rules. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, folks. Now, Tom, would you like to do the honors, please, of administering the oath to newly elected board members?
We do it quickly, the cameras won't be on, and nobody will potentially be standing in front of the camera.
So we'll have to swear Carl in the next meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Each school board member before taking his or her seat on the board shall take the following oath of the office.
I, Ed Mulholland.
Joe Everly.
Mary Maxey.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Member of the Board of Education, in conjunction with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, the rest of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect and obey your interests by serving as a faithful protector of schools as their assets. I shall courage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek that hearing before the board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no individual authority as an individual in a decision scanning meeting, only a person who is in a local board meeting. I shall abide by a majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to see changes in such decisions through adult and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality of education of every student and student. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of our community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for District 200. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to obtain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and a long tradition respecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for District 200, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district for fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the area of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
At this point in time, we would elect a president pro temp. Do I have a motion and a second for a president pro temp?
Just, by the way, technically, I'm just going to give the motion.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I have a nominee, Joe.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Secretary pro temp, do I have a motion?
I think we...
We were going to do a just...
Okay. Do we need to?
Yeah.
We don't need to. That's fine.
Okay. I didn't, we didn't think that we needed to. All right, since you're here already. All right, that brings us to the nomination election of school board officers, and the first position would be the office of president. We will entertain motions, or if anybody would like to share their interest in being president, perhaps somebody would be so kind as to nominate you.
I'll nominate Joe Everly.
And I certainly have no problem whatsoever if anybody else is interested. As I was reviewing board president responsibilities today, it said there's no extra power, just more responsibility, and I thought, oh, that's right. No extra power, just responsibility. Any other motions? Do we need a second for that, for those? Okay. Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I say that for myself? All in favor of electing me as president? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, folks. How about the position of vice president?
I'll nominate Tom Kinzer.
Any other interest in vice president? Any other motions? All right. We have a motion for Tom Kinzer as vice president. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That brings us to the position of secretary. Do we have a motion?
I'll nominate Mary.
Any other nominations? I guess I, we should ask, you do want to do this, right, Mary?
That's fine.
Okay. It's possible to nominate somebody and just make them do it. Okay.
Only Carl.
That's right. Oh, we have plans for Carl. All right. We have a motion for Mary as our secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mary. And treasurer. Do we just keep our same treasurer?
Just nominate Mark Olson.
We can nominate one, but we have a district treasurer.
A district treasurer, okay. We don't nominate him, though.
You can nominate Mark Olson to continue his treasurer. He's accepted.
Somebody like to nominate Mark Olson?
I'll nominate Mark Olson as treasurer.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We will keep Mark Olson. All right. That brings us to the appointment of the board committee positions. I guess maybe to make this easier, is any, since we're the same board that previously sat here, does anybody want to see any changes? Does anybody want to move on a committee? Change their role or responsibility? Business committee, Mr. Mulholland and Mr. Kinzer, you're still fine serving?
Sure.
Do either of you want to be the chair? I guess we can talk about chair position later, I guess. Or does anybody have a desire to be chair?
If that means no, I guess I'll do it again.
Mr. Hazelhurst, are you still fine being the chair of the CIA committee?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to keep Mr. Rudy on that committee. Facilities and long-range planning, we have Mr. Moon and Mr. Kinzer. Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Moon, you were the chair before, I believe?
Yeah, I'll be fine with that.
Would you like to continue that? All right. Policy committee. Mrs. Maxey and Mr. Moon.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Mary will keep you as chair. I have been, I'm on Booster Club, but I haven't attended Booster Club for quite a while now. Brian, have you attended those meetings? Would anybody else like to be on Booster Club? Wednesday night is sort of a precious night for me. I hate to give that up. All right.
Carl?
I'll talk with Carl. I'll talk with Carl and see if he's interested. And Mary, you're on our governing board. Would you still like to continue?
Yeah, that's fine.
Communications committee, we don't really have, hasn't really been active, but Ed and I are on the communications committee. North Boone Foundation, Mr. Mulholland, would you stay on there?
Sure.
Okay. That no longer exists, and that no longer exists. All right. That hits all of those appointments.
Yes.
All right. Do we have, if you look at the rest of the agenda, do we have a motion and a second to approve the rest of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the rest of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Maxey and a second by Mulholland. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to the approval of the consent agenda for personnel. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda for the personnel item?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel as presented.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moon. Motion and a second. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes. Motion passes. Brings us to new business, establishment of regular meeting dates in place. Does anybody have a desire to change the night? Used to be Monday nights. Been at Tuesdays for quite a while. Does that still work for everybody, or do they have a desire to see any change?
The schedule you see is tailored after the same pattern we're on now, so. Is something different over this one?
I'm fine with the way it is.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second for the regular meeting dates as per past protocol?
Make a motion to approve the meeting dates as presented.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hazelhurst, do we have a motion and a second? All in favor of keeping the meeting dates per previous protocol? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the summer library program.
Yeah, again, we're recommending the summer library program. It's a way of keeping reading in front of our kids during the summer and books in our kids' hands. This proposal that you see is similar to what we've ran the last several years, so recommending that we pass the summer library program for this summer.
Make a motion to approve the summer library program as presented.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Any questions?
Two librarians are kind of shady, aren't they?
They do a very good job.
We do have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Upstand.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations, librarians, and all summer readers. That brings us to item C under new business, the technology purchase.
Yeah, at last week's business meeting, we shared a proposal where we would buy 40 devices with docking stations for the high school to replace some of our older desktops. We talked about a plan which would lease devices for grades five through eight with the idea of growing the number of devices so that there'd be enough devices for all of our kids. Also, replacing smart boards. We have 10, I think it's nine, nine or 10, old smart boards that need to be replaced. And we also have a SAN device that is getting towards the end of its life expectancy, which we need and use for hosting our servers. We did have some requests for more information. One was regarding insurance for leasing, which, gosh, Melissa was supposed to be here. She was going to talk a little more about that. And Randy also was here to talk about the SAN and us possibly hosting in the cloud. Did Randy walk away trying to help with some of our technical issues?
He's behind the scenes with the imagery there.
Okay. We did price some of the SAN out. I can talk about that in a summary, and if you needed more details, we'll grab Randy. For us to go to the cloud, by the time we priced it out, a new SAN was $24,500, which hosts 13 of our servers. For us to host 13 of our servers outside on the cloud, we were looking at close to $20,000 just to do, per year, to host that. So by the time you do it over five years, the life of a SAN, it would cost us a little more. There's Mr. Porter right now. The other thing that he can talk more to about, too, is if we were to have our internet go down, we lose, what do you call it, functionality or contact with all of our host programs that go along with it. So we still felt that the SAN was the best, was solid move for us, both financially and strategically, to keep the district up and running. Randy, I'll let you, if they have questions, Randy, you can speak to it a little more?
Sure. Any questions there?
So, question is that, Randy, is it a change in what we're doing today, based technology, or...
No, this is just replacing some, a product that has gotten into play. Actually, in support is December 31st of this year.
Okay. And doing this in-house, you, obviously, then you would have the technical expertise.
Yeah.
And do we have backup on that, or is it...
Backup would be part of the purchase, will help with the installations. I've never any issues. I mean, I'm...
Yeah. It was Melissa, not you. Maybe the leasing gets talked about this time, too. Is that all good?
Okay. Any other questions for Randy?
The other big question that came the last time we were at the business meeting, too, was talking about, on the devices side, the effectiveness or the instructional use and then the professional development that would go back into the classrooms. And when we get our curriculum director on board, bringing her in with some of her thoughts and strategy as to how we would use it in the classrooms with professional development. I don't have that yet tonight, because we are in the process of hopefully hiring a curriculum coordinator or director tonight. So what I would look to do is table the device side of it, and then bring in our curriculum coordinator, curriculum director for next month's meeting, and follow up more with the devices. And Melissa was going to be here to speak with leasing, but she's had something pop up, so she could speak at the leasing side of the devices next meeting, if that's okay. I would like to see the board pass, or at least make a decision on the SAN, so that we can put summer plans into place and work towards how we're going to replace the SAN or back up what we have on our servers. The other thing that I would like to do is also pass the, just the replacement smart boards, which we would use Title I money. We have rollover money of about $40,000, and I want to say the smart boards were...
Expensive.
Yeah, like 20, $28,190. These are replacement boards that we have in the district that are no longer functioning the way they should. So we'd like to use the Title I rollover money that we have, that we have to spend by this summer, towards purchasing the cost of those smart boards. So it would be the SAN. I'd look for approval of the SAN and the smart boards to keep those things moving forward for some of the projects. Questions, thoughts, comments?
If there are none, do we have a motion and a second for the SAN and replacement smart boards as, as Mike presented?
And like I said, I'll bring you more information back with the devices for the main meeting.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the smart boards. The SAN, was there a third thing?
No, just replacement smart boards and the SAN.
Replacement smart boards and the SAN.
Do we have a second? So, Hazelhorse, we have a motion by Maxie and a second by Hazelhorse. Roll call, please. Kelly.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your help on that, Randy. We appreciate it. And that leads us to item D, athletic fees.
Yes, this was also an item at the last business meeting. Um, we talked about, uh, how our fees were one of the highest in the area and, um, we are moving to reduce our high school and middle, middle school athletic fees to fifty dollars per student for the year with a family cap of two-hundred and fifty dollars. Um, it was discussed there about lowering those prices, making sports more accessible and, uh, trying to encourage to get more people out, as well as putting a family cap on. So we put together a proposal and shared it with you there.
Mike, did you say two-fifty or two-hundred?
Two-fifty.
I think Melissa, yeah, that's a good catch, because it's both in there. And I think if Melissa and our talking was, um, we probably, I'd pick the lower of the two, the two-hundred.
I think a five-person family is pretty rare anymore.
Yeah, and I'd pick the lower of the two. We're not looking to, it, it's not a revenue generator or anything like that. This is more about getting kids some participation than it is about generating revenue. So, and Brian pointed out that the price was in both spots, but if it was my recommendation, I'd say two-hundred.
And that's a combination of the high school and the middle school together, so if you had...
So if you have a middle school, yeah, I would, for the district, yeah.
Any other questions? Any other information needed? If not, do we have a motion and a second for, uh, the athletic fees to go to fifty dollars with a family cap of two-hundred?
Make a motion that we reduce the high school and middle school athletic fees to fifty dollars per student with a family cap of two-hundred dollars.
We have a motion by Maxie and a second by Mulholland. Roll call, please. Kelly.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, that brings us to item E, math textbook adoption.
We have Molly and Cheryl here to talk about the math book, uh, math textbook adoption, as long as several other committee members too. And this has been an adoption process that has been long and cumbersome, but I appreciate the hard work that they're doing with it. There has been, I've sat in on a few meetings and they've had some hard, difficult conversations reaching a, a solid decision which they've done tonight. Um, we are asking the board to approve a K-five math adoption, um, based on our, uh, negotiations and us looking at all of the materials that come with it. We've got the price to a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars for K-five math adoption. And Matt, Molly's going to summarize a little bit about what all that adoption entails and maybe a little bit of the process and everything that went with it.
So if you can't hear me, just let me know and I'll try. Um, I want to welcome Jenny, who represents the first member of our committee. Jenny Demaschek, who represents the candidate. Nicholas Daley, who represents the veteran.
Thank you, that's a good idea.
The other committee members couldn't be here, but they're, actually, they're watching with us tonight. And then Cheryl, who are facilitators. So if I come to anything that you want more information on, please stop me and I want to open up to them to go ahead and try and, as they might be able to do, if that's all right with you guys. Um, just a quick summary as we presented to the, um, curriculum committee, um, the board curriculum committee on March sixth is basically, this math committee started in, um, September of last year, twenty-seventeen. They started looking at the Common Core standards and really kind of determining, ordering and determining, um, what standards they really wanted to make sure that we guaranteed were taught in depth at each grade level. So they chose priority standards to pack, to unpack about twelve to fourteen per grade level. And I think that's narrowed down from something, thirty-something at each grade level. Um, then the committee reviewed a bunch of sample materials from, um, different publishers. They went in-depth of five of them and then chose to pilot Go Math, which, um, been piloted last April into May. And that was, uh, published by Cleveland Hardcore. And then they piloted Vision Math two-point-no, which was piloted from, uh, we're working on it. Now you will find that our recommendation is for Intu Math, which I will get to in a bit and how that actually came about, because that can be a little confusing. So, the pilot, um, went over kind of two different school years. They wanted to have time to really dig in and really fully experience each, um, product materials without having too much, kind of just quickly do it to, to get it done. They really wanted to give it a full headshot. So that's why we went over two school years. In December, we met with a final assessment that each completed a, um, a big rubric which you see kind of, uh, in your board packet of our recommendation, uh, where everything was kind of ranked in the end. Um, but it was looking at math content, instructional designs, new materials and resources, teacher materials and resources. And so like I said, that summary is in the recommendation packet. Then we came back, um, after we reached a consensus for Go Math in December, we said let's come back together and finish talking in January. And right before we went to, um, winter break, Cleveland Hardcore, our representative emailed us and, you know, wishing us, aiding us in piloting and all this kind of stuff. And he told us about the new product that they were coming out with. And we're like, okay. So we talked to the committee about it. And what we ended up finding, and the committee said, we want to at least take a look at it, at what we, you know, um, say no or do. So what we found out was it's still an evolved version of the Go Math, which we fully recommended, what the committee kind of came to a conclusion on. We found that Intu Math, which is, is that evolved version. So it's a lot, all the good stuff of Go Math plus more and a lot of the stuff that we were still looking for. The committee ended up talking with, and we invited pilot teachers and some pilot teachers in as well, but then they're talking with an H and H math consultant, which is Cleveland Hardcore. Um, they were able to fully review and complete field tests, some of the Intu Math materials, um, and, you know, really review a sample of it. And then we came back together. At the March, um, CIA meeting, we had said, this is kind of where we're at. We're still finally, we're trying to finalize seeing, you know, whether we want to recommend Go Math as we, or Intu Math, the new version of it. And the CIA committee just basically said, we trust you, go ahead and finish up, you know, cover the board with your best recommendation. So, um, on March eighteenth, we met and we also conferred in with an H and H math specialist at that time. And they were able to demonstrate some of the new features on the web platform. And what we're recommending is it's, uh, material, like, physical materials along with the lab materials. It's kind of how it comes now as it develops. Um, and the committee pretty much unanimously finalized the recommendation for Intu Math. So, um, kind of the key reasons for our recommendation are the opportunities for the students to express thinking, like clarifying, justifying, contributing, representing their thoughts. There, we should, we're hoping, or we should expect to see really our students participating and conversing in rigorous problem solving and getting, uh, that is that biggest transition from where we were to where we're going, is that, is that discourse. And also, we're looking for that we can, um, providing tools to address gaps. That was a big thing we're looking for. And so that when we send kids up to, like, especially fifth graders, you know, fifth grade, we, you know, we walk around our math numbers and there's a gap in fifth grade. So we're hoping we can send a lot, uh, more of a math grade kid, you know, not that we can, when we looked at K-one, two, three, four, we weren't looking at more of the big fifth grade. Something's happening. I'm hoping we can close that gap, that resource or help resource out. Um, this resource definitely helps, or helps aligns with our scoping sequence and pacing with regards to high-stakes testing. Most of the main material is taught before the high-stakes testing comes in. Um, it aligns with our priority standards. The learning activities adjust students' varying learning styles and control visual auditory instinct and clarify thoughts like the instruction. So, like I said, we're really hoping to close that gap. Um, this material, these materials should really help support teachers in instructional expertise with, um, problem solving. That was one of the things we, I know we talked about when we, uh, we, the, the last fall was, we had some really good problem-solving professional development, but we're starting with the resource help support. And we found that Intu Math will help support that foundation as well as help to, um, you know, really do a good job of teaching, um, helping us getting the fun, math fundamentals to kids. And, uh, you know, they have a good structure for that. Questions I can help with or anything else?
So clearly you've had goals when you started this process. Can you share with us what those goals were?
Sure.
What do you, like, expect to see change based on the adoption?
We're really expecting, hoping to see at least, and we kind of keep, we're looking at some goals to see at least eighty percent of our students entering fifth grade as math buddy. Um, we want to look at teachers with a toolbox of effective math instructional strategies, most students' abilities, meaning reasoning, problem solving, communicating, communicating. And really increase students' ownership. That's a big one, is helping kids to own their learning. Um, when we very, when we really started the process from the very, very beginning, it was to kind of narrow down the scope of what we intend now from the huge amount of standards to say, you know what, we're going to really focus down on these main standards, make sure we're getting these across to kids. And then when we started looking at the resources, okay, how do we best teach these standards to kids? Like, what materials can help support us in math? And what materials can help support us in helping the kids to take ownership of what they're learning? And that, a lot of that's that problem solving and that support for guiding math, which is a lot of the ways that a lot of our teachers are going to teach now. Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to try to add on? Yes, please.
Um, one thing that I think we noticed in the Intu Math that I think a lot of prior math textbooks were, not that they didn't have that, but definitely from what kind of the flow is that, um, past practice was just to teach kids the math algorithms and they just don't know how to solve a problem. And this textbook series actually breaks that down. And there are, they're full-length lessons on what that means and how do I apply that and not just pay what is free spec. But what does that mean? What does that look like? You're breaking that down. And I personally, I feel like when students are able to understand what they're doing, that, that solidifies math for them. And so I'm hoping that through this textbook, but also through the process of teaching it, we're giving students to a point where they are understanding what they're doing and not just putting numbers on a page and doing the operation that, I mean, that's how I learned math. My teacher told me the rhyme, I copied it, and that's, that's what math was, where this textbook really helps solidify some of those concepts and, and what I'm doing and not just why I'm doing it and that's just what I do.
Are there going to be resources available for parents so that they can help their kids with this? Because like you said, we were taught differently. And I, I know my kids are grown now, but mostly, and, but I heard of the struggles with some of the other parents of younger kids. Like, they just, they don't understand how to help their kids with this math.
I'm not entirely sure what I'm...
Yeah, yeah. The, um, the, the biggest thing that, that this uses to address that is, um, the electronic platform that comes with it. And, um, the same publisher is the one we're using both at the high school and at the middle school this year. And our experience is that it has, it has, um, it has produced as promised in that it's, it's available to students twenty-four, um, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, three days a week a year. And they're using it so they can access it from home. And they have what are called back tutor, electronic tutors. And they have additional modules that are, that are, that are worked through electronically. And, um, sometimes students are more comfortable asking an electronic platform than they are even a person. Um, and so that's, that's becoming the number one thing that this, that this series offers in terms of helping parents. And many of you have heard me say this before, the math tutor is just nerdy enough to be really engaging for, for both the students and for the parents. No one feels like they're going to look any sillier than the math tutor. And, and, um, I, I also tell the story of, you know, seventh grade classroom this year, the teacher was getting, administering a test electronically. And, um, the student who really normally performs very well raised her hand and she'd been pushing the computer and she said, "I can't get the math tutor. I can't get the math tutor." And the teacher said, "Yes, it's my test." She was so used to advocate, when we talk about students owning their own learning, she was so used to advocating for herself that, I mean, that's a life skill in this system. Good.
I think I'll put anybody in the stock during the interview process, the candidates for the new curriculum director. This was presented to them. They understand that some of that, our sense of support and direction that we're going to go in front of them being hired. Is that fair?
I'm pretty sure I presented it. Um, Carrie, would you like to answer that?
I, I really don't want, I don't want to do that. I'm just asking you guys.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hope that I just, I, gosh, I want to think that I didn't sugarcoat anything. I, I really laid what the struggles were, what the hurdles, what the challenges are that we're looking at and what we're facing. Um, I think that that's part of the interview process. Not only me get to know them, I want them to know what our district is facing, working on, and some of the, some of the initiatives we have in front of us. So, um, I hope I was, I know by interview three, I think I was pretty, as a matter of fact, is what I could be, I hope anyway, so.
Thanks, where I was going with it. I don't want to go two years down the road and find out if somebody else...
I wasn't told.
Something different.
No, and I felt that that was a part, part of the interview process, that they knew exactly what it is that we're working our tail off to try to do.
Molly, is the, I can understand the web of base being useful at home. Will you be able to utilize it, eh, in the classroom also? Okay.
And there's a lot of web-based, I know, um...
And currently, please, I was about to look up the technology plan to see what they had there to see like...
I would say at Manchester and Cabrin, I think we have enough technology that, like, our students in classrooms can, um, get to that thing, like, in small centers. We don't know, I mean, we do have enough for every student to be on it, but not in every classroom at the same time we might have more. We're kind of at a two-to-one right now.
Okay.
But every classroom could have a center that's working with your, I think, um, public group. They would definitely, they have some cards for almost.
We could, you're not there at two-to-one there. You're a lot closer at Manchester and Cabrin. I think the other desire where they're going to see a need for more devices, and correct me if I'm wrong, is fifth.
Fifth grade really, um, excuse me, I'm going to make a noise. Fifth grade really made a, a point of saying, you know, really to make sure that I'm using this to my best, my ability with our structure and how we're set up. It's like, we need devices in, like, that class of, I think, that's just, you know.
Six is already adopted, so they're seeing the need for it now?
Yeah, K through four, I'd love to see more. I've, I've proposed of getting more out to public group, even though they're double sides of us, of our smaller schools. Um, but they're not as focused on using that technology, you know, as that whole class group or necessarily, you know, they use it as a support or a, you know, to help. At fourth and fourth grade, I would say to help, like, you know, with projects and things like that. But it's not part of that everyday instruction at the lower level. But definitely something we're starting to want to see more of at that primary level.
Just the idea that the teacher instruction is still so important, K through four?
Yeah.
And does it still allow for somebody, and I'm just curious, does it still allow for somebody who's maybe not tech savvy and not ready to incorporate it to still do a certain, and, or will the admin be saying, "You, you need to use this"?
One of the things we talked about with our, um, our representative, uh, actually the, um, tech person, the, the, or trainer?
The H and H math specialist.
Math specialist, was that knowing this is, one, it is a brand-new, um, a brand-new series to H and H's machine. And suggest, one of the things you might want to look at with professional elementary is you, you know, your implementation's a little slow. Like, can you do more of that hard copy stuff that first year and really, and let the people that really are into the tech to start integrating as they see fit? And then we're more integrate that tech as you go. But yes, it, it can stand alone as tech-only or as...
Thank you, Molly. Does anybody have any other further questions?
I'd just really like to thank the committee again. I know you guys put a lot of time in and I really do appreciate your input and time with that.
Yes, thank you, Molly. Do we have a motion and second?
Make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, purchase of Intro Math, Intu Math, K-five by Houghton Mifflin Hardcore, comprehensive package for one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, and H and H's.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. A motion by Maxie, a second by Moon. Any further discussion? If not... If not, roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks again, Molly. And please thank everybody for us, for their hard work. All right, that brings us to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. We will also discuss collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, as well as the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Roll call.
Yeah, go ahead, do roll call.
Thank you. We have a motion by Maxie and a second by Mulholland. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will adjourn to executive session.
Probably, yeah?
Let's see, I guess I'll leave this down.
All right, do we have a motion to leave executive session?
Oh, second.
We have a motion by Moon.
Second.
A second by Maxie. That's just a voice call.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Mary, I believe you have some.
I do. I move to approve the hiring of Carrie Neary as curriculum director, beginning July 1, 2019, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Maxie and a second by Hazel Horse. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Motion, motion passes.
Sorry, Jeff. Uh, move to approve the hiring of Jared Peterson as upper elementary principal, beginning July 1, 2019, as presented.
We have a motion by Maxie. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Hazel Horse. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the hiring of Nicole Diford as Capren principal, beginning July 1, 2019, as presented.
We have a motion by Maxie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve Allison Lewis as North Boone Middle School principal, as of July 1, 2019, as presented.
We have a motion by Maxie. Can I have a second, please? Second by Hazel Horse. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Heavely?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Motion passes. Announcements, any other information? Enrollments, student activities, runs?
No, there's just all these information.
Those are just in there? Okay. I thought I would share with you. Well, I'll be contacting you about the results of the special meeting we had the other night and, and a plan for moving forward and.
Can we share my written stuff that I gave? And then you can share it all as one?
Sure.
Or the other way, but first I can share.
But we'll need to, in order to make the next May meeting, we'll have to be doing some emails to make sure that we've got our ducks in a row for, for setting board goals done. Good. All right, can I have a motion for adjournment, please?